Good evening and welcome to all of you who are here with us tonight in the Commissioners Auditorium and those of you who are home watching. I'd like to call this meeting to order and our first order of business is our royal call, gentlemen. Okay, next we'll have our invocation by Commissioner Hammond and our pledge by Commissioner Owens. If you'll please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are grateful and thankful for another day. We thank you for your forgiveness, for full friend fellowship, and your many blessings of life. Have mercy upon us tonight and direct us by thy Holy Spirit. Conduct this meeting in a way that will be beneficial to the people of this county and the citizens thereof. And forgive us for our sins and transgressions. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Let's face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion approval of the agenda?
Second.
Okay, let's vote on the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
There was made mention adding a topic, Commissioner Webb.
Okay.
The town of Aiden had requested that we consider a one-time, one-year match of up to $11,000 for the Boys and Girls Club of Aiden to cover utility costs. We just add as a discussion or decision item tonight and we'll discuss it further every time. Guess it's number seven.
Okay. All right, we'll do that. Maybe we'll move it up to the top. That might be. Okay, all right. Our next order of business is, excuse me?
You need to go ahead and if Mr. Hammond agrees to include that in his motion, then you can vote on it.
Oh, okay. I thought he was, we would just, is that okay to add that, Mr. Hammond?
And I want to add if he's going to put Aiden there, the one north of the river, at the same time.
Is that all right? Yeah.
Okay, and who's second did it?
I'll second.
Oh, okay.
Can I make it in second?
And then you need to vote on that.
Okay, and now let's vote, please.
And you all just do.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Rhodes, public hearing, City of Greenville ETJ.
We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is for the extraterritorial jurisdiction extension request by the city of Greenville. Give you a little background on this. You may recall when countywide zoning was put into effect back in 2003, the board adopted a policy for consideration of any future ETJ extensions by any of the 10 municipalities here in the county. And this particular time we've got an extension that's basically property owner-driven, but it did flow through the city of Greenville for consideration. So, some of the specifics for this case, it is involving one parcel, parcel number 56-551, and it's owned by Greenville Auto Auction Site LLC. It's about 16 acres in size. This does follow the policy and we'll get into the process in just a minute. And one of the major concerns here, it is split. They own a parcel that's on the opposite side of the line that's currently within the ETJ of the city of Greenville and a large tract on this side or the county side of the ETJ line. And here's a map showing the parcel in question. Lot of different colors, lot of different activity right in this one vicinity here, given that different jurisdictions are involved. Number one, just to orient you, this is the intersection of Allen Road and Dickinson Avenue, trademark, head station right here at the corner, just to orient you. That is actually, in that color, the salmon color, is within the city limits. The area just adjacent to that is within the current extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city. It runs right up against the county's jurisdiction in Oxford Park subdivision, which is a small commercial development here at the intersection of Frog Level Road and Dixon Avenue Extension or 264A. The property in question is hatched here, red behind it, yellow hatch. It's about 16 acres in size and it's just adjacent to where the larger part or the developed part of this property for Greenville Auto Auction is located, which has frontage out on the Dixon Avenue Extension. Again, the whole process and the policy that's been established is to see if an extension is warranted in a particular situation and there's a number of criteria that we look at. And there has been a report developed and is included in your package tonight for consideration. Through that process, the property owners that are involved, in this case only one, and again primarily property owner-driven in this case, they have been notified and the appropriate notifications and ads have been put in the paper. The considerations, large number included, just to ensure that if the town or city in this case would like to extend its jurisdiction, that a number of items are looked at such as a land use plan, whether the town or municipality has subdivision regulations, and a lot of other issues that need to be considered. The process, this has already flowed through the planning board for consideration and now is here tonight for your consideration after the public hearing. Some of the things to be considered as part of this, this is yet just another step. If the town or the city wants to proceed with the ETJ extension, there are other regulations, other processes to be followed specific to state statutes. This, of course, would extend to ETJ. It is not a city limit or not an annexation issue, so there would not be any taxes involved in this case. However, with the ETJ extension, it would be, this property would be subject to a number of different city regulations. Impacts on the property owners, in this case, again, just one property owner or a group of property owners, would fall subject to the zoning and building code requirements of the city. And also, representation would be held by those folks in the ETJ on the planning board and Board of Adjustment, but not City Council. In looking at this request, we feel from the staff level that it is consistent with the county's ETJ policy. And given its location, and it is currently within Oxford Park subdivision, which is already split between the city and the county's jurisdiction, we see that it is appropriate to allow this extension. Water service and sewer service may be available in the future. Water service is actually already there. And again, we feel like it is appropriate. The planning board also has reviewed this at their July meeting and is recommending approval of the ETJ extension. So with that, Madam Chair, we'll welcome the public hearing.
Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is anyone signed up to speak?
Madam Chairman, at this point everybody's signed up and somebody in the audience comes forward.
Okay, did anyone come in that didn't get a chance to sign up that would like to speak? Okay, if you'll come forward and identify yourself, please.
Madam Chair, as a procedural matter, if you just want to remind that for public hearings, you allow each speaker five minutes to speak and request that they state their name and address prior to speaking.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Steve Janowski with JS Janowski Engineering in Greenville, North Carolina. I represent Greenville Auto Auction Site. As a result of development and a lot of the things that are going on there and a lot of the improvements that are going on at the site, one thing that became apparent was that there were some advantages to be able to use all three properties as a whole, but because of the two different jurisdictions, it limited the ability to use that property. So, gotten in touch with Planning Department on both the city of Greenville and also Pitt County, and we've basically worked through the process and the procedures to bring this. And I'm obviously in agreement with James and I, if I have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any statements or questions from Commissioners?
I'm going to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
James, the property that Pitt County owns coming from the landfill that comes up in there, how far is it from that back apart? I know it's not far.
Give the map back up to one of us. From the landfill, I don't believe, this is Teakwood subdivision at the very top, at the northern part here. To my knowledge, the county doesn't own any property down to this extent. It's a bit further north of this wason.
Not very far, it's woods. We checked into about.
Field Mike can determine that a little bit better.
I shouldn't even ask that question anyway. Go ahead. No, no, that's all right. I'll check one later on, we're in a hurry.
Remember seven thirty. Okay, Commissioner Smith?
What's on the property that growing on it now? Anything?
Actually, right now it is undeveloped and as the project engineers mentioned, the primary purpose is to allow some of the stormwater activities to kind of spread across both properties. And there's some real reasons and justification for having that property together in one unit versus straddling the line. The state will not allow one jurisdiction to review it for another jurisdiction. So in this time, at this point, we're recommending to review it as one unit as part of a stormwater plan for the development site. And in this case, it serves the owner a lot better if he's looking to expand.
Well, the other property is probably asphalt and concrete.
Yeah, you can see a little bit of it. It's kind of, has a screening over top of it here, but you can see the buildings right here in front and also some large parking areas adjacent to the current facilities out there on the adjacent property that's currently within the ETJ.
Are they going to be able to mitigate that to the property that is in question today?
They will be able to utilize that property as part of the formula for determining how much of a impervious surface they had that then dictates what type of best management practices have to be put in place.
And a half a mile on the stormwater taxes.
Won't say about the taxes, but more the types of improvements that have to go in.
Okay, Mr. Harris?
Yes, Madam Chairman, based on the decision of our planning board and the recommendation of our planning staff and the fact that this request is consistent with the criteria for our ETJ policy, I make a motion that we approve this.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes?
Just a quick, due to it being a request by the city of Greenville, my employment there, I'll be abstaining from the vote. Just wanted to explain the abstention.
Okay, then let's vote, please. Okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Rhodes, you're up again.
Actually, I'm not. I'm getting it set up for Mr. Evans.
Oh, you're not? That's right. Ryan, I'm sorry. And I saw you sitting, and I saw you sitting out there. He just does so many public hearings, it was just kind of coming naturally to roll in.
I understand.
I'm glad you only had one tonight. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Okay, Mr. Evans?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, again, thank you for allowing the voluntary act district ordinance to move to this stage of holding a public hearing. As advised at the August 6th Board of Commissioners meeting, the edits to the draft ordinance have been made and the public hearing notices have been advertised as required. The ordinance was coordinated in its development with legal and planning staff and there was a proposed enactment date added to the ordinance of March the 1st, 2013. And this would give time for the Board of Commissioners to get the ag advisory board appointed and get their procedures developed. Since the August 6th Board of Commissioners meeting, we have received endorsement letter from North Carolina Cooperative Extension and the Pitt County Office and also have a verbal support of USDA Farm Service County Committee. The agricultural advisory board will be a five-member board and it will be appointed per county procedure. The county will be divided into four regional representatives and one at large. And the regions will be represented by Highway 11 and the Tar River. As far as signage goes, this is a little mock-up sign of what would be placed on the parent tract or on the headquarters of enrolled lands into the voluntary ag district, just signifying that they are a member of that said district. So, staff would recommend at the conclusion of the public hearing, the adoption of the voluntary agricultural districts ordinance with an enactment date of March 1st, 2013.
Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open. And do you need to read the statement again? I don't.
Yes, the same rules apply. As stated on your sheet, that Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters related to this public hearing. Each person will be allowed up to five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address prior to speaking and all comments should be informative and constructive. Inappropriate comments, including insanity or personal attacks, will not be tolerated.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone signed up? Anyone that has come in? I know that some of us have had some positive calls made. We may need to close the public hearing and then I'll see if there are any Commissioners that have any comments. Questions?
I want to make a motion to approve.
Mr. Owens, okay?
I'll second.
I move that we approve the recommendation.
Second motion.
Close your hearing. Close your hearing.
I thought I did.
She did.
I did.
She did, all right.
Thank you.
We'll go.
But I'll do it again. Okay, let's vote, please. And I think many of us did receive a lot of positive phone calls and comments from our local agricultural people and they were very anxious to know some of them when and where. They're ready to come sign up, so.
Thank you for your support.
It passed and thank you very much. Okay, the next two items are presentation for the Eagle Scouts and then recognition of our Pitt County Girls 12 and Under All-Stars baseball. I mean softball, excuse me. I'm sorry, girls.
Madam Chairman, if I could just.
And I was so excited that it was a girls softball.
The board act on these two before we.
Yes.
So move the second.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. We'll do our Boy Scouts first.
Tonight, we're going to recognize three local Boy Scouts tonight who this year have earned the Eagle Scout Award. And one of the comments we normally make is nationally, 2% to 3% of all Boy Scouts actually become Eagle Scouts and go to that extent. And I was trying to think of something different to say tonight of what they do. And one thing I, having a son who became an Eagle Scout, knowing that each project entails many, many hours and maybe hundreds of hours by the time you take all the volunteers who help each young man do their projects. So, I think it's important to note as we describe these projects, that this is not a project of one single scout, but a group of scouts in a community. So, if we can call forward the first young man and his family. Tyler John Letchworth, come forward. I'll go ahead and read the certificate. This is entitled Certificate of Appreciation Awarded to Tyler John Letchworth, Troop 25, for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he built four eight-foot benches out of treated lumber to put beside the community walking trail behind the Sam D. Bundy School in Farmville, North Carolina. It is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners this 20th day of August 2012, signed by our Chairman Beth B. Ward, Pitt County Board of Commissioners. Would you present that?
Congratulations. Very proud. Would you like to say anything? You don't have to. You don't have to say anything to get the certificate.
There's a lot of hard work and I'm glad I had a lot of opportunities.
Good, we're very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
His daddy wanted to say something.
Yeah.
Next, if Jamison Anthony Edward Dowe and his father and family will come forward. Mother?
Judd.
We have a similar certificate and I'll just go ahead and read the project. His project consisted of tree planting and landscaping at DH Conley High School here in Pitt County, North Carolina. Again, this is presented by our Chairman Beth B. Ward, this 20th day of August 2012. Ms. Ward?
Congratulations. Good job. Proud of you. Would you like to say anything?
No, thank you.
Very politely done. Thank you, guys.
All right, and our third recognition tonight is for Brandon Lee Spain. Brandon's project consisted of, he built a tile paver walkway from the prayer garden to the retreat house at the St. James United Methodist Church here in Greenville, North Carolina. Again, we have a similar certificate, signed by our Chairman Beth Ward.
Congratulations, Brandon.
Congratulations.
Would you like to say something? Good. It was a lot of hard work and I definitely couldn't have done it without my fellow scouts. We have two more in our troop to retrieve Eagle. We have our troop is Eagle Patrol, our patrol is Eagle Patrol, and we have only two more out of our whole troop. We had seven in our group and we only have two more to get and we'll have all Eagles in our troop.
Congratulations. That is, that's something to be very proud of. And I'm glad you're proud of that. Thank you, Mom.
Well, next tonight, under presentations, the Board of Commissioners are going to recognize the 2012 Pitt County Girls 12 and Under All-Star Softball Team for bringing home the Babe Ruth World Series back here to Pitt County. We're very proud of this and we have recognition for each of the girls and the coaches and...
If the girls will come up and we'll kind of go around like this and the coaches kind of at the end or both ends, either way you'd like to do it. Just kind of. There you go. When is school starting? When does school start, ladies?
Monday.
Monday? Okay. And we've got a lot of parents out in the audience, too. They have been, they need a hand. I think we need to give them one. They've been doing a lot of traveling and just like everything else, it doesn't happen unless these parents support these girls and I know they appreciate it. Let's get them this way and then we'll get the full picture.
Get a whole, full circle here, yes. Well, tonight we have certificates and again, Ms. Ward, if you, I'm going to go ahead and read it.
Yes.
So, titled and it says Certificate of Recognition awarded to, in this case, Grace Cochran for, go ahead and go forward, for her participation in the Pitt County 12 and Under All-Star Softball Team and on the winning Babe Ruth World Series. Presented this 20th day of August 2012, it's on Beth B. Ward, the Chairman of Pitt County Board of Commissioners. So, Grace?
Very proud.
Next, we have Kaylee Coltrane. Lauren Conway. Cameron Davis. Kara Davis. Autumn Dyson. Trinity Gibbs. Emily Kirby.
Congratulations.
And I'll admit on this next one, I need some help.
McKenna Mathias.
McKenna Mathias, thank you.
Congratulations.
Lindsey McCollum.
Lindsey, congratulations.
Abigail Rau.
Congratulations.
Morgan Shirley.
Morgan Shirley.
And for the coaches, Coach Brian Kirby.
Thank you so much for all your time.
Thank you very much.
Coach Barry McCollum.
Okay, congratulations. Thank you so much.
And the last recognition, to the team manager, Charlie Langley.
Charlie, thank you so much for getting them together. I know you can look at these young ladies and these men that work with them and those parents out there and Pitt County was very well represented, represented out there. We know, we're very proud of that. Thank you so much for doing a good job. Okay, and good luck next week. If you get in a little tighter, they want to get a picture, maybe get some, you want to get some in the front?
Yeah, because some of them come in the front.
Yeah.
You and Scott maybe get in the back.
Oh, yes.
Sure.
Girls can just kind of do the plug down.
They've had so many pictures taken, they're so famous, they know exactly what to do, right?
And one more. Yeah, my camera, I'll come back.
She's a writer reporter, not a camera woman.
Exactly.
Thank you again, ladies. Thank you so much. Appreciate it again.
Congratulations.
Okay, Mike. Tell Commissioner Smith to hand him a glasses. He probably can use them.
I started to put them on.
Okay, our next item or items for report and our managers' report, Scott Elliott.
Madam Chairman, public addresses, do you want?
Oh, yes. I jumped ahead. You just touched me. Okay, all right, public addresses to the board. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, we have Brenda Harris.
Okay, Ms. Harris, if you'll come forward and...
Same remarks apply in the matter of public addresses. It's three minutes per speaker.
I'm Brenda Harrison. I'm routinely in front of you because I believe that our taxes are a problem in Pitt County. But I'm here tonight to praise two people in this room. Mr. Elliott has agreed for a meeting. Our Chairman has agreed to meet with me on Wednesday. And in that meeting, we're going to show Pitt County some of the problems that our tax administrator is bringing in liability. We have to have equal protection, but I bought a show and tell to tell you. My company is being targeted again. I have $250 in fees for 11 taxes and I looked and I said, oh me. So I went on an investigative event and I spent a few days in the tax department, probably going to spend tomorrow, but just to show you, JKM Investment Group, West Point Properties, has five. He owes $41,803.66. The last payment he made was February the 7th of 2012. So it's been six months. He doesn't have collections. He doesn't have a $250 fee. He doesn't have any garnishments because you can't garnish an LLC, but our tax administrator doesn't know that. Now, I can track a black cat in the middle of the night with no moon. Most people that know me well know that's what I'm known for. I'm also known for being spunky. But what I want to tell you is tonight I praise Scott Elliott and we've been on adverse sides over a couple of years, but I want you to know that I believe we have a good heart here. I believe that he's good management. I believe Ms. Ward has an open ear to hear and I believe that great things are going to happen Wednesday, folks. And at the end of the day, justice is all of what we want. And I just wanted to let you know that if we've got two that'll hear, the Lord said that those that have ears to hear, let them hear because truth is something that we can stand on. God bless you and thank you again, Mr. Elliott, for making this move. And look up JK Investments and try to figure out why he's not being collected on for 2011 taxes and the rest of us might be or may not be. Let's find out the answers. God bless you.
Okay, then next is our managers' report. Manager Elliott.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Word. Item A, the first announcement is the...
and showed some opportunities where we wanted to expand out in other areas, whether it's our internet, whether it's our social media, Facebook, Twitter, those kind of applications that are being used to reach the public, the next generation, the younger generation who like to interface through those, through the different types of technology. I don't know if anybody else wanted to, commissioners or staff wanted to say anything about the conference? If not, we can move on. Item C, on the agenda, dedication of Charles E. Russell Building at Pitt Community College is scheduled for September the 7th at 2:00 p.m. on campus. And the other item that was put up before the Commissioners tonight, there is a visit by Congressman Paul Ryan scheduled for here in Greenville. He's supposed to arrive at 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, the 22nd, and leave the next day. I believe you have a copy of that in front of you. With that, Madam Chairman, that's all I have.
Madam Chairman, doesn't Mr. Webb have something he needs to tell us?
Well, I have something that I wanted to tell us. Trying to find a place to sandwich it in. Thank you, though, for reminding us. We are well represented by Pitt County, and I kind of wanted the citizens to know it. Last week, we recognized Kathy Booker. Kathy, will you stand up? Are you still out there but think you're behind the pole? And she has been elected president of the North Carolina Tax Collectors Association. That's the state association. And Janice Gallagher, if you'll stand, please. We recognized her last week. She has been elected president of the North Carolina Association of County Attorneys. That's for the state. And Melvin McLaughlin, Melvin, will you stand? Was elected this past weekend as, I want to make sure I get it right, vice president of the North Carolina Black Elected County Officials. Is that correct?
That's right.
Congratulations. And Glenn Webb, if you'll stand, and we're very proud, is this the, I don't know, have we had a second vice president before?
We had, we had, well, the president last time was in 1971, '72, and we said that was Mr. Webb.
Mark.
Mark.
No, Mark.
Martin.
Martin. Bill Martin? Bob Martin, not Bill.
Bob Martin, thank you, yes, Bob Martin.
He's a book writer, Bob Martin. And Glenn, if you'll stand, Glenn has been elected second vice president of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and that's a countywide group. And I'm just so proud of Pitt County. We're highly represented out there, and we got a lot of that back from some of our other departments, and so I just kind of wanted to acknowledge that, and thank you guys for being willing, and ladies, for being willing to serve.
And Madam Chairman, as second vice president, Mr. Webb will then become first vice president, chairman-elect, and then chairman, and he will be the, well, the president of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners in a few years, so it will be a very prestigious recognition for him as a board member here and leading the statewide organization.
And that's if you keep your nose clean and don't get impeached. Okay, let's give them a round of applause. Okay, thank you for letting us have that moment, and did you mention the performance measurements?
No, I was going to go there next...
Okay, ready to go?
Okay, the next item, too, under Items for Report is Performance Measurements, July 2011 through June 2012. This is the year-end report. This is the published report I'm holding up here that is a compilation of the different metrics that we use within the departments to track how we are performing, whether it's the number of permits issued, the number of citations issued, the number of hours worked on something, the number of animals adopted. There's just a various number of metrics that are used, and this is the final report for the fiscal year. We, it has been a goal of ours, and it continues to be a goal of ours, to take this to the next level, and I think Finance has done a very good job, being the lead agency on this, all the years they've done it, and hopefully with Melanie Bryan's successor, whoever that will be, once we name them, this will be a tough objective for them to take this even to a higher level in the near future, so.
Good, thank you. And our next item is our July 2012 Tax Collection Report. Ms. Booker?
Thank you. The combined collection, tax collection rate for real and personal property and registered motor vehicles for July 2012 is 7.11, which is an increase over the July 2011 rate of 4.95.
Okay. Do we...
Motion to approve the Tax Collectors' Report.
Okay, let's vote on that, please. Thank you very much for the good news. Okay, and the items for consent...
Motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the items for consent, and if we'll go to items for decision, do you want to bring up your item?
I'll do that one first.
Commissioner Webb, let's go on and get that done.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Recently, I attended a town of commissioners meeting for the town of Aiden. In there, it came up that the Boys and Girls Club in Aiden is in a pretty bad situation. They are short $30,000 total in donations and operating costs. I know that all nonprofits are short in the times we live, but they're at to the point now where we may lose service. And what we're talking about is the town of Aiden has asked if we would join with them in a dollar-for-dollar match up to $11,000 per entity, so a $22,000 total. 11 would be our part if it got that high, a dollar-for-dollar match for utilities for the Boys and Girls Club in Aiden. And this isn't, you know, it's one thing fundraising and such, but there's no way to raise that type of money so far that quickly, and so this would just be a match. I know we haven't done much for nonprofits over the past few years, but we're talking about something that's potentially shutting down, and if this has to shut down, we're going to pay for it anyway because these people will have to get county services, one way or another. And so, I'm in favor of it. I think that'd be a good partnership with the town down there. I know it's tough for any board to ask another board for assistance, so I think it was a difficult position for them to be in, as well as the Boys and Girls Club and the kids that they serve. And if anybody's got any questions, I entertain the best of my ability.
Okay, any comments yet?
I have a comment.
Okay, yes, Mr. James, and then...
I know Aiden y'all lost more money than we got on our side of the river, and I know all boys' clubs are being treated, not just in Aiden, but there in Aiden, in Greenville, and everywhere, their funds are coming from all sources. So, if one's hurt, they're all hurt. You read that in the paper. And I don't think we need to take and do for one that we're not going to do for the others. So, if we're going to do for that one, I think at the same time, we need to do the same for the other Boys and Girls Club. I really do.
Okay, Mr. Owens?
I think we all know that we are appreciative of each individual community that functions and what they do for the Boys and Girls in each individual club. I believe we previously gave money to Aiden, did we not?
Yes, sir.
When they started up, they start up?
Fifty thousand for three years.
And I think that was good and well, but I also feel what Mr. James says about, we've got several units all over the county. How many do we have, Madam Chairman?
Five.
But anyway, it should be somewhat of a balancing out. I concur with what Mr. James was saying there.
Okay, Mr. McLaughlin?
And I was the chairman of the board at the time that we fund Aiden, and then we, and it was, I think it was supportive of this board to do that. We did it for the building of the Boys and Girls Club over there. While I think it's a noble gesture that Commissioner Webb proposed, but again, as Mr. James said, we would open the floodgates for more nonprofit organization to come, but we just turned down the G, the...
GPAT.
GPAT for the same basic reason. You remember that, Commissioner Garrett? So, I think that we cannot open the floodgate for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Just on that, real quick, the difference is, no other ones have asked us yet.
I've asked.
I know you're asking, but the organization has actually asked in this situation. The town of Aiden, the town of Aiden has asked, so I don't think it's an impropriety because we're addressing this as a one-time thing. This is not a continuous contract. It is a one-year proposition up to a dollar-for-dollar match with the town, and that's the difference is this isn't a, just a donation. It is a match partnership with the town of Aiden where they are providing half of the money for the service, and that's why I was supportive of it, because we had a partner in it. The municipality was asking for help. No one else's, no other municipalities or groups have actually asked us in this, other than for Boys and Girls Club, not talking about the GPAT. But I think, and they're all important, but I think if you look at the service, if you weigh them out versus the service with the Boys and Girls Club's providing, I think it's very important, and they can't do it in the dark or in the heat. And I would make a motion that we approve a one-year dollar-for-dollar match with the town of Aiden for utilities only for the Aiden Boys and Girls Club. That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded? Yes, comments?
Since there has been a second, I am equally concerned that we would be opening the floodgates. Everybody knows that the Boys and Girls Club do a tremendous job, and we appreciate everything they do, but if we start allocating money to one, I believe we were just told there are five, then we need to go on and multiply that by five, and then there are other nonprofits, as it has already been pointed out, that we did not fund, and I just think that we would be establishing a, an unmanageable precedent. Therefore, I cannot support it.
Okay, yes.
Can I just...
We don't have the money.
Manager and then you, Mr. James.
We don't have the money. Jim, you're right. You might as well face it. We've got to go into...
I can just interject.
The manager.
I did speak to the town manager, Adam Mitchell, on this, and he said that the town...
Adam, chairman?
Just a minute, let the manager finish, and then I'll speak to you.
The town had tabled this until the Board of Commissioners made it, took a vote on it, and they were asking for a dollar-for-dollar match up to $11,000 for a total of $22,000. Just wanted to, in case this were to pass, to be clarified.
Okay, Mr. James?
We don't have the money.
Okay.
That's the first thing.
Okay.
We up taxes, and then we're talking about now using the continuous, putting violence, that's bad.
Okay, Mr. Hammond?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a statement relative to what my colleague, Commissioner McLaughlin, said about the floodgates of Independence being open. I came on this board in December of 1998, and the floodgates to Independence were open at that time, but since then, they have been not only closed, but they have been, they have been closed and welded together.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, just one last statement and one last plea, I guess, is that it's not establishing a precedent in my mind because we're taking these on the individual votes. We can not approve other requests that come before us. Other places have not made the request. Apparently, their utilities are okay. I know everyone's had to cut services, but we're not talking about a service. We're talking about actual function of being open, and so I don't believe it would open the floodgates. And when you look at the comparison with GPAT, since that was given as an example, they didn't have to shut down, and prior to that, they were, it was mentioned to them about doing external fundraising to cover their cost, and even without the money that we gave them, was they were not looking at an impending shutdown. At this point, if they cannot meet the utility obligation, they may lose total service in Aiden.
Okay.
I'm just pleading to your better side.
I call for the question.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's our vote, please. Mr. Hammond? Okay, the motion fails. Thank you very much. Our next item is Mr. Dickerson. You'll come forward.
Good evening. You have my abstract on the HVAC outsourcing. We had really two prices finally. One was Piedmont at $705,000, and ABM was about $40,000 more than that. So, based on the price and the contract that we proposed, I have recommended Piedmont as the contract.
Okay, is there any comments or emotion? Yes, Mr. McLaughlin, and then Mr. Webb.
Mr. Dickerson, how many bids did we have for this outsourcing?
We had a total of three. The two that we're considering, the two that we're considering met all the requirements that we set out. The third one didn't sign his bid, didn't provide the required bid bond, so we disqualified that one. The two that we have met the requirements for bidding.
So, what, in your opinion, well, how was the final decision made to, oh, is there, has there been a final decision? I know we are the final decision.
Our final recommendation...
Final recommendation.
Is contained in your agenda packet. We, and that recommendation is based on price. We did show everybody contract documents as to what they would have to do. As with all contracts, they're only as good as the people behind them, but we were pretty much convinced that they all looked at the same thing.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
So, it was based on price?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dickerson and myself met with both firms and basically had an interview-type meeting, going over their bids, going over their proposal to clarify any points and to look at the proposed contract, and also to ask them to clarify. One of the questions we asked them to clarify is, what it would cost to bring any components of our system up to speed that the contract wouldn't address, because it was one factor that we needed to know, and both firms came back and clarified what that cost would be. And it was actually a lot lower than what we were anticipating on both instances, which we were pleased to see.
It's between the bids and the final negotiations, the price went down $26,000 approximately.
Sir?
Between the bids and the final negotiations, the price went down $26,000.
Okay, now, I'm going to ask you a personal question. If you would have to make that decision yourself, of those two that you just mentioned, which would, would you choose, and why?
I think you're asking me for personal feelings, and I report to you on the facts that I have.
Yeah, based on the facts that you have?
Based on what I have in writing, I would...
Yes, sir.
My recommendation holds.
Yes, sir.
For Piedmont.
For Piedmont?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Webb?
What was the upgrade cost difference?
ABM estimated $13,000. Piedmont estimated around 10, but elected to forego the upgrade cost initially. In other words, upgrade cost would be included in their monthly payments, but it would be included in $705,000.
And again, it's actually a three-year contract, $235,000 a year. If the county was not pleased with the service being rendered, there is a pullout clause. Our intention would be, obviously, to run this for a year, see how, what the performance is, unless it was just really not going where we thought it would, reevaluate it at budget time, hopefully with the...
I think you're asking me for personal feelings and I report to you on the facts that I have.
Yeah, based on the facts that you have?
Based on what I have in writing, I would-
Yes, sir.
My recommendation holds.
Yes, sir.
For, for Piedmont.
For Piedmont?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Webb?
What was the upgrade cost difference?
Uh, ABM estimated thirteen thousand, um, Piedmont estimated around ten, but elected to forego the upgrade cost initially. In other words, upgrade cost would be included in their monthly payments, but it would be included in seven hundred and five thousand dollars.
And again, it's actually a three-year contract, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. If the county was not pleased with the, um, the service being rendered, there is a pull-out clause. We, our intention would be obviously to run this for a year, see how, what the performance is unless it was just really not going where we thought it would, reevaluate it at budget time, hopefully with the intention of continuing it for the second year and third year.
I'm always wary of taking a risk on a, on apparent something for nothing. I mean, because ten thousand dollars is a lot of money to build in to something that you'd already quoted price. Well, I've got another question. When it says serviced of equipment, what does that consist of? Just changing the filter or any service that we need?
Pretty much if it breaks down, you fix it. With the exception of large things like chillers, cooling towers, which are not included in our normal budget.
But I mean, what's the routine maintenance? Does it come in, change a filter and leave, or is it preventive maintenance every time?
It is preventive maintenance and we have about twenty-five pages of checklist that they go through, through the entire project. And that would apply to both firms.
What labor rate are they going to bill us at?
It's a contract price, they know.
Are parts included in the contract?
Yes. Again, except for the large equipment such as chillers.
In the details of the contract, did they include what the price markup on parts was?
No.
So we don't know?
We didn't ask them what the price markup was. We just asked them for a contract price to-
And the reason I'm interested in that is because when it comes to HVAC stuff, there's a, it's like buying jewelry almost. There's what it's worth, there's what they pay for, and there's the markup. So mark, you know, I, I'm concerned about what we're getting charged for markup. And the last question I have, and I'll let you off the hook after that, is, uh, are there sets, dates and times for the maintenance?
Yes, they have a maintenance frequency, uh, on our scope of work and our checklist.
One last question, then I'll let you off the hook.
As many as you want.
Were references checked on these businesses?
We recommend Piedmont. We checked one reference that we thought was similar to us. We found that we don't get very good feedback when we call people that we don't know, but they do maintain Shepherd Memorial Library and, uh, so we did check with them and they were happy with the work that's been done.
Okay, uh, Mr. James?
Well, you answered my question primarily, Phil, where you're from Melbourne. Uh, you know, over the years, we've kind of depended upon what you have recommended. Uh, you only had two companies. These two companies, what kind of inventory do they have as far as paying taxes in the county of Pitt? Can you tell me that?
Piedmont's in the county of Pitt and, uh-
And the employees?
ABM is not at this point.
All right, but they, but they, how about the employees that live in Pitt County, so to speak? Anyway, I'm satisfied.
I don't remember exactly. Probably in twenty or thirty range for, for Piedmont.
They're saying six, six actually resigned.
No, they're saying fourteen, fourteen.
Okay, fourteen.
All right.
And they would have to hire, I believe they say about one and a half to two more to get our job done.
So this contract's for three years and it's a one-year. We look at it and then if we're not satisfied with it, we can go?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Owens?
I think Mr. James hit on one of the things. Piedmont Services is a Pitt County group. And I, I personally know that type of work, the technicians they have does a great job. They've done my office for approximately fifteen years. So I, I think they have the top recommendation, whoever people they work for. But that's not my problem. And if we vote on them, I'm going to vote for Piedmont. But my problem in this is outsourcing, uh, I don't believe it's going to save us any money. I thought in the beginning, we talked about outsourcing, we were going to see some drastic change in the cost. This shows me, does not show me that. You know, we, we're in a state of depression almost and what they say that came from was outsourcing. That's why we have so much unemployment. But if we're going to vote on a company, I'll vote on Piedmont. Mr. Manager, you might want to respond about it.
Yeah, I'd like for you to.
I've asked you three times and I still don't have enough difference to make a difference, Scott.
Yeah, I was going to ask him.
This has been a long process between developing the RFP, getting the proposals and vetting the whole process. There's, there's a couple of elements here that I think need to be brought out. One is that the utility costs, we're hoping and expecting that they will drop three to five percent by the fact that the level of service that, that this group are going to be held to in the contract will allow the equipment to run more efficiently. So we're expecting utility costs to drop. And out of nine, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars in costs will more than make up, I think we should see an overall decrease. The other is within the first, I believe, ninety days of the contract, whoever's awarded the, the contract is required to come in here and clean everything, coils, equipment, and get everything up to a, a top-notch operating system. The guys we've had doing it in the past have done a, a great job, but due to limitations on the number of people we have, um, they've done a great job, but have been limited in what they could do. This contract, we, we spent probably a good two months, um, hammering out this, this contract. The contract was included as far as the RFP package that went out so that anybody who bid on this knew what was going to be required of them. We've even gone back and forth since the proposal's been brought in to, you know, some folks have said, well, can we adjust this or that in the contract? And basically we've said, for the most part, no, the contract is what the contract is. Here are the terms and conditions and this is what we expect in terms of the service.
Are you of the same mindset now about the money? But when you started this, did you think that it was, were you projecting? You said you had an opinion as to what was going to happen, but did you think then outsourcing was going to bring up savings in money, Scott?
I thought it might be a little bit less than what we're doing, but I think in the long term, through the higher maintenance of the, the equipment, we'll have less breakdowns and failures and that the, the long-term costs, the energy costs will stay the same or depending upon what energy costs do, we're going to hold off those increases through increased efficiency of our, our plant, our HVAC plant.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the bid for Piedmont.
Uh, Madam Chair, a question.
Yes.
One other question. And this might be to the manager too, or Phil. You know, I, I, you know, outsourcing may be good in, in to a degree, but, Miss Manager, I'm concerned about the employees that, 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 uh, that may be losing jobs and thus not bringing forth any tax, uh, money to this county. Now, uh, we looking at ABM, you're looking at Piedmont, uh, uh, Phil, are any of these companies propose that they'll utilize some of the, our own employees?
We don't have any employees in this field anymore.
We've had, employees have either retired or we had one that's going out on workers' comp. We used to have, um, three, three and a half people dedicated to this. We no longer do. We, as of June thirtieth of this year, our last full-time HVAC tech retired and which really kind of made the beauty of this, that we didn't have to say, okay, we're going to keep these people and now, um, transfer them to another function. Now, if you'll ask, um, Mike Rogers, who's the, the Buildings and Ground Superintendent, one downside to this that he sees is the fact that these people at times might be used for other purposes. Let's say we have a hurricane come in, we've got to clean buildings up or we get, we get snow removal in the wintertime. He, he could take these people and move them over and do other functions. So his staff is being constrained and, and lowered in terms of number. So that's a downside in his mind. And, and that is a logical, it's a valid concern of his. But so, I mean, the bottom line is that there's no employees being displaced, being rifted or losing their jobs.
I call for the question.
Okay, we have one more comment from, one third last question from Mr. Webb.
And I'll make it a combination question. Would, just about, uh, Pitt County people, would ABM not be located in Pitt County and not have any people from Pitt County employed there? And with the energy savings, which is the moving everyone's going to, does one company provide more diversity than the other to go ahead and get in with them as we look big picture as we move toward the future?
Okay, at this point in time, maybe him has no employees in Pitt County except for Jay Tripp, their salesperson. Uh, they're, what they have stated to us and is that they will establish an office in Pitt County and I would expect their services to spread so that there would be considerable employment in Pitt County.
So there's new business here with new employees?
So you look at whether you bring in a new business and build over time or whether you patronize the businesses already here. And I think that's your decision.
And to the energy savings movement, diversity-wise?
The energy savings.
Or do you offer any other services?
For example, right now, we've got several locations that we're working on problems and these problems are such that they cause us to use more energy. So, uh, we definitely need to fix those things and we don't have the people that can get to it right now. We're just, when somebody calls and says it's hot, they have to go try to fix it. That's all our people can do. I guess if you're looking for qualifications, uh, ABM has one. I believe that Piedmont does it and that's the performance contract. And they've actually done performance contracting work, which, uh, Siemens has done for us over the years. So, uh, there may be a little, um, more competence there as relates to energy.
Thank you.
Energy savings.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned Siemens because I would figure we are in a better place than we've been in the past to be doing this because of the work that Siemens has done. Mr. Hammond and then we'll take a vote.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman and board members, uh, there's not many technicians that work for the county now, within the county that was trained and doing heating and air conditioning work when this building was built. This built, this building that we are currently sitting in is nearly sixty years old and I, and they've been patching up this stuff and, and know where, and know how to do it for, for years and years. And I'm, I, I'm very pleased that they, that they knew how to continue to, to service this equipment. But these, the, these outside companies, I, I know that they got service charged for every hour that they spend hunting down the problem and then fixing it. And, uh, as you were saying, uh, Commissioner McLawhorn, employees are, are, are hard to find when it comes down to specific tasks like that, that we have in our own maintenance and building and ground department. But, uh, when the phone rings and they come out, these private companies, before they, before they start to look for a problem, there's a certain amount of money that you already owe them. And can you imagine this antiquated equipment that, that, that's in these buildings here? I was asking Commissioner, uh, Owens as the, just before the meeting started, do we still have radiator, heating radiators in here up in this building field?
No, sir.
They've been going.
We don't have them now?
No.
All right. Well, anyway, I would, I would want somebody to know exactly what they're doing when they're called to look at these problems here and-
I would put our equipment-
That's okay.
That this is a lump sum contract, so.
Okay. All right. Um, Mr. Elliott, one comment and then we're going to vote.
This contract will cover all Pitt County facilities with one exception. It does not cover the detention center. The, the sheriff, I think, had decided with the personnel he has out there that they would continue to maintain their own facility, probably due to security and, and such, but it does conclude every other building within the county, the county's ownership.
If we'll vote now, please? Okay, it, uh, passed. All right, um, our next item. James, right, you're up again.
Madam Chair, members of the board, with the adoption of the land use plan last December, our planning staff and planning board members have worked over the last several months to prioritize the implementation strategies within the land use plan. And there are quite a number, we've included that in your agenda package tonight. And, um, what we are attempting to do is actually set our work program for staff and the planning board over the years to come. Remember, we've got about a twenty-year horizon for our land use plan. So we're attempting to put these things in some type of order so we can eat away at some of the, uh, uh, strategies that we have in here. Uh, again, we've got several different areas of concern that are listed on the screen here in front of you, and we've been working to try to put this in a format for staff and for the planning board and well as the board here to, um, consider. Uh, realize the viewing public, and you probably can't read this on the screen, but this is the format that we've used, um, that indicates the listing of all the objectives and the implementation strategies. With that, we've gone through and listed a relative priority, whether it be high, moderate or low, and our, uh, target completion date. And again, we can't do this on our own, of course, just from the planning staff's perspective. We've got a number of other agencies, Public Health, Department of Transportation, Community Schools and Recreation, involved in these efforts. And then we've also listed, some of these activities are already ongoing, some we've made great progress on just over the last several months since the adoption of the plan. For example, on the top of this sheet, um, is, uh, continue the Pitt County Priority Projects is listed in the Greenville Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. We're very pleased to announce with the upcoming school year that we now have a crosswalk, a cross-county home that's been put in place, given a number of partnerships that we've been able to include, including DOT, Public Health, Community Schools and Recreation. And that's, actual crosswalk will be in place before school starts. So, uh, very excited about that. All the listings are included in your package tonight. I hope you've had a chance to talk among yourselves, review them. We're very encouraged by the activities that are already going on and our planning board is as well. And staff and the planning board are recommending approval of these priorities.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion with-
Second.
Okay, um, if we'll vote, please?
May I ask a question, Paul?
Yes, sir.
Seven-thirty, Gene.
You were the one that told us. But this put more rules and regulations and stipulations on this stuff, Gene?
No, sir. It really means for the enforcement of the existing-
Thank you.
Yes.
Because we got enough rules and regulations.
Okay, if we'll finish voting?
Need to do it with-
Please?
Yeah.
Okay, that passes.
Thank you.
Um, yes, sir. Uh, and Mr. Elliott, the dignity and respect campaign proclamation?
Yes, Madam Chair, on page eighty-nine, you have the, um, agenda item that Commissioner Melvin McLawhorn asked me to put on the agenda. This is a, a follow-up from the National Association of Counties Conference in Pittsburgh in the month of July. You'll see the, um, proclamation on page ninety, um, for the dignity and respect campaign. There's thirty points that go with this that's on the following page, on page ninety-one, as to different tips on dignity and respect, such, such as, um, being considerate. I'll just read a couple of these out just randomly. Do the right thing, lead the way, become a mentor, lend a hand, and then there's a whole website that's dedicated to this.
Okay, and would you like to add anything to that?
No, ma'am. It's just the fact that, uh, uh, this, this mission was championed, uh, by the fact that everyone deserves dignity and respect and that, uh, in order to move on, uh, through the county's employees, uh, organization, one must have dignity and respect. So we're, we're joining a national initiative to do this, and I think that, uh, I'd like to see Pitt County, uh, being part of this.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. I thought we always did that.
Yes, sir. I think we're just letting everybody know we do it. Yes, sir. We're just declaring it.
All right. I'll vote for it.
Okay, thank you. And next, uh, the Pitt County's proposed statewide legislative goals.
Yes, Madam Chairman, on this item, the county attorney and myself have prepared this jointly, basically the-
Move approved.
Second.
Thank you for the effort. And Mr. Dickerson? Did Phil leave?
Go to the next one.
Okay, we'll go to the appointment for the North Carolina Eastern Region Development Commission.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Todd Edwards as the North Carolina Eastern Region Development Commissioner.
Any other nominations? Okay, let's vote. Okay, and Mr. Dickerson, you are now the last item. The contract for financing guaranteed energy savings, huh?
A few weeks ago, a recommendation was brought to you to do this financing with Bank of America. Since that time, we've been to the LGC and we've, uh, looked at some of the factors associated with the contract and it will be approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars less cost in going with Siemens financing. One of the reasons is they don't have to have a letter of credit. And I'll try to say this really carefully. And I'll try to say this really carefully. Instead of having a letter of credit, if Siemens doesn't perform what they say they're going to perform, then we just don't pay them the shortfall.
Oh, okay.
Nobody else is involved.
Madam Chairman, anytime we can say $350,000, I'm in favor of it, so I make a motion we approve this.
Second.
Okay.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Did we miss something here? Why weren't we aware that this, you're supposed to have this, what's the reference called?
Letter of credit.
Yeah, yeah.
The letter of credit was required in the RFP and actually when we looked at the financial estimations, they all had quoted it with the letter of credit. When the LGC, the local government commission, looked at it, they determined that we could do it less expensively by not having letter of credit, like Phil had said. Since Siemens is actually doing the improvements to the building to render the, the energy savings, Siemens has another arm, which is kind of like Siemens Financial. If they were to bank loanless to us and be that financial instrument, if we do not, on a yearly basis, if they don't deliver the savings they say they're going to deliver, then the, the debt service payment we're making for the improvements, we wouldn't have to pay that portion of it. So it knocks out the letter of credit entirely. We, we've, we always require a letter of credit normally as a standard operating procedure for doing business. We hadn't thought of not requiring the banks to have that letter of credit.
Later that you had to have the letter of credit, that's my point.
Well, we had it from the get-go in the RFP, correct, Phil?
Yes. This 350,000, how much you say, Jimmy?
350.
That was never an issue?
The, the LGC, out of, out of 3.7 million dollar project, figured a way to save us $350,000 over a 19-year note.
So they'll see, all right, now you answer my question.
Okay. Okay, let's, we have a motion right on the second, so let's vote.
I have a motion repeated, Madam Chairman.
Yes, Madam Clerk?
The motion is to withdraw approval from Bank of America proposal for financing Pitt County's energy savings contract and award the financing contract to Siemens Industries.
Have we paid them any money?
No, sir. I think it's important to note as well, Bank of America, now that the, the terms of this have changed, have withdrawn their proposal to finance it. So everything's just really lined up nicely.
Okay, that concludes our meeting, except for our commissioner's comments. Mr. Webb?
I just want to thank everybody for their support at the conference this week. It really meant a lot that they went out there and helped me campaign and, and hopefully I'll represent you well and not get impeached, as you said, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. McGlaughlin?
No comment.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
No comment.
No comment.
Mr. Harris?
No comment.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes, ma'am. I'm in a state that Reverend Sidney Locke was a native of Pitt County. That is not correct. He is a native of Louisiana.
Okay, we had that in our proclamation. We didn't have it in there that he was a native of Pitt County, but I think it was in the paper.
We just said he was a resident of Pitt County.
He was a resident, but he was not a native.
No, we didn't, we didn't say he was. Okay, Mr. Owens?
Move it, James.
Okay, let's vote and we will be adjourned.